Meeting of the Town Council Commissioner interviews for April 15, 2025 is called to order. So tonight, we're going to go through a process similar to what we've done before where we'll ask people to come forward. But first, I can maybe ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Risto?
Here.
Councilmember Reni?
Here.
Councilmember Badami?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Hudes?
Here.
Would you like me to go over the procedure?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Council is scheduled to interview five applicants. The interview binders contain the interview questions as approved by the Council Policy 2-11. The standard questions are limited in number to allow the applicant sufficient time to respond. You can decide not to ask all the provided questions, change the order in which they were provided, or ask appropriate questions. The mayor will determine the order Council members will ask questions for each applicant. The applicant will be given two minutes to respond to each question. Once the interviews are completed, I will announce the boards, commissions, and committees, along with the number of vacancies and the number of applicants who applied to the positions, and distribute the ballots. Once the voting process for all the boards, commissions, and committees is completed, I will announce the results. In order for a candidate to be appointed, a majority of votes, three or more, must occur. In the event of a tie vote, a runoff will be held. The mayor will now proceed with the interviews.
Okay. Do we need to do verbal communications first?
Yes.
Is there anyone online or in person who wishes to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay, then we'll get started. So...
I just wanted to ask a question because this came up at the last interviews. Typically, when people apply, if they're interested in more than one mission, they check that off. And we did not put general plan on here or ask any of these candidates if they're not appointed to the planning commission, would they be interested in general plan? Is that something that we can't do now, or is not, doesn't make sense?
I can address that. So, the policy provides that the council can make appointments to alternative commissions if the candidate indicates on their application that they're interested in the alternative appointment. And this agenda item was noticed broadly enough to cover any commission appointments. And so if there is a possibility of someone serving on a different committee, my recommendation would be that they state that they're amending their application to include that alternative appointment.
Okay, thank you. So, to follow up then, as each candidate comes forward and we're interviewing them, obviously, if they're first, they're here for planning commission, we can ask if they are not appointed, would they be interested in appointment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you all for, and some of you for coming back. It's a really wonderful thing to serve on a board or committee or commission. I'm sure that you will enjoy it as much as I have. It's a meaningful way to serve our community, and we're very grateful for your willingness to put in the time that some of these appointments take. The council members have read your applications, so we don't need to go back over in detail, but we, the council would have the opportunity to ask some clarifying questions to better understand your interests and your ability to serve. So, in order to make the process as fair as possible, we're going to ask the applicants to come for a particular position, and we're going to start with the planning commission, to all come up and have a seat. And if there's someone else on Zoom, you know, please, please come up. And, yeah, so, planning commission applicants, please come up. We're going to start with a question from a council member who will ask the first question of a particular applicant, and then all of the rest of the applicants will have the opportunity to answer that question, or to decline to answer it, if you like. You'll have up to two minutes to answer. You don't necessarily need to use all of that time. And we'll go through that process until all the council members have had an opportunity to ask questions. There are standard questions that are in, in the procedure, but council members shall not be prevented from asking appropriate questions of particular applicants, or a particular applicant or applicants. So, let's start in with the planning commission, and I maybe could ask Councilmember Reni to start with Ann Schwartzstein?
Okay, so I think this question is, is valid for everybody. I'm looking to understand your, your thoughts on growth and potentially how you manage growth. So, I've been trying to think about how to ask this question. I'm going to ask it in this way. If you were back at the beginning of, let's say, a housing element cycle, how, and, you know, the state is asking us to participate in helping solve the housing problem by putting housing in Los Gatos, how would you do it? You can either tell me you do just what the housing element already does, you could tell me how you might change from it, or you could go from scratch. But I'm curious to understand your thoughts on how you would participate in, in helping solve the housing problem through the required process of the housing element.
Okay, thank you.
Start with Ms. Schwartzstein. And if I've missed or announced your name, please catch me right at the beginning so I don't repeat it.
Yeah, no, my first name is Annie, and then, yeah, my last name is Schwartzstein. So you got that correctly. And I apologize, I'm not in person. I am a PhD student at UC Santa Cruz, so I'm actually teaching, and I had to end my class a little bit early. So I'm just finishing up teaching right now. But yeah, thank you for the great question. I really appreciate it. I think it's a really interesting question. Right now, I think obviously, the state has asked us to, to build a little bit more in town. And I think that that is a challenge, I think, in terms of managing and managing the concerns of the residents, while also managing, you know, growth. I think that the way that the town has had a lot of input from residents has been really great with the housing element. I think it would be great to, you know, have had that housing element maybe passed quicker because we would have had maybe fewer building remedy projects. I think that would be ideal. But I do think it was a really complicated process, and I think that it was great to get as many, as much input from residents as possible. So yeah, I think that it's really important to manage growth while also thinking about encouraging as much input from residents and also maintaining as much charm and character in the town as possible. So, I think that that would be my answer, is really managing both of those, both of those qualities of the town. I don't know if I would say that one of them is more important than the other. I think my job as the planning commissioner is to balance both of those in equal, in equal quantities. So, that would, that would be my answer.
Thank you. And since this is our first time, you could just state your name and then answer the question also.
My name is Rasha Lashin. It's my pleasure again to come to the application for the planning commission. And with regard to the question that you raised, I think it is very interesting balance between addressing the neighbors or the residents of the town concerns and also the growth that we're looking at. In my experience, I always look for enabling the right things that works for both as much as possible. And so, there would be a lot of due diligence done and research done of how that growth would be supported, what type of growth we're looking for, is it commercial, is it residential, and have an understanding more around where is the landscape that we'd be looking at that, to be able to make the right decision that would satisfy both in a balanced approach. I've seen a lot of the minutes from the council sessions, and it looks at all of these different ways that making things happen with conditions that it would still maintain the town experience and what it serves for the community. That's how I would think about it. Thank you.
Good evening again. Nice to be back. Thank you for the question. I think, Rob, that those kind of broad questions gives us a lot of leeway for answers. And instead of being wordy and vague, I'll just respond directly. I don't think we should go back. I think in combination with the general plan, which is, you know, developed for a 20-year or the segment, it feels like in the town of Los Gatos, things change, you know, weekly, monthly, yearly, and from a decade perspective, right? What was a good decision in 2004 may not be the right decision in 2025. The town growth has been, you know, fluid, interesting, complicated. And I think that the guidance from the Town Council and the Planning Commission in conjunction with the general plan and the building codes we have, every decision is kind of unique. So tomorrow, if there's an eight-story building that wants to go up, that may be a different response from the Planning Commission of the Town Council than it was 15 years ago. So, I agree with most people in town that managed growth is the most important thing. I think I gave you that answer the last time I was here, a responsible growth. But it's a slippery slope. It's complicated in our small town with limited land and limited buildings to satisfy everybody. I know that the state is barking at every small town to add housing, and every small town is barking back at the state saying, we don't want, you know, overpopulation and irresponsible growth. So, that's what I think we should do moving forward.
Thank you. My name is Joe Sorty. Great meeting you all. I've met a couple of you before. That's a really, it's a very abstract question. I mean, given the circumstances we're in right now with housing, being a planner by profession, I guess I'm used to being stuck in a box a little bit more. I mean, we know what the state mandate is, we know how the regional housing needs assessment works, you know, the, I think the demographics and all the numbers that are crunched to come up with what each city needs to do, you know, comes from the state, comes, then it's done regionally, and then it's muted out in the regional housing needs assessment. I think that, from a big picture standpoint, there could be a little bit more thought done when it comes to what seems like unrealistic arena expectations on the part of regional governments. It feels like, you know, the dictate, it feels like a dictate in many ways. It's just to stick as much you can into a, you know, into a small box, without a real lot of regard and careful thought about resources constraint situations, you know. Some of that's natural resources that we deal with. Certainly, it has to do with, you know, densities in hillsides and proximity to hillsides where you might have issues like, you know, fire risk and things like that. So, I mean, from a bigger picture standpoint, I think more thought and certainly more careful analysis could have and should have been done at state level, and should be done in the future, instead of the situation where we're in right now, where, you know, we've got the HCD through the course of this legislation basically dictating that we stick housing in places through, you know, via builders remedy and other mechanisms like that, where you, you know, those sites just simply have never been studied for that. So, yeah, more thought. You know, from the standpoint of what the city from the town should do right now, I mean, it's certainly to follow the rules. We obviously have a mandate, you know, the number of units we need to complete by 2031. I do think that the regional fair share in terms of numbers is probably about right. Well, it's hard to say that's right from the big picture standpoint. It certainly is when you compare it to adjacent cities. The city of San Jose has a 62,200-unit mandate, which is, I work for the city, it's utterly ridiculous. It's going to be a very big challenge to even hit 50% of that. So...
Thank you. It'll be opportunity. Vice Mayor, maybe if you could start with Ms. Lashin?
Yes, absolutely. So, not, not a dissimilar question, but, but more talking about balancing risk. So, I want to ask a little bit about the competing risks that I see as we evaluate development. So, I think if we can think about like a risk spectrum, I think on one side of the risk spectrum, we have the risk of, of drawing lawsuits. If the commission votes in a way that violates state law, right, if we go against builders remedy or things like that, and especially developments that, that the commission is compelled to approve. But on the other side of the risk spectrum, we have the risk of ending up with developments that some residents feel are, you know, significantly out of step with the character of the town. And so, I wanted to, to understand how you would try to balance these competing risks as you evaluate development proposals.
I like the word risk. I've been in risk management for years in my career, and these are the things that I focus on on an ongoing basis, on understanding and assessing the all the sides of the risks that we see in any development. And it could be competing, it could be favorable in some areas, but the, the whole evaluation has to take into account all of the factors that would impact one response versus the other, whether it's impacting the state, the regulations, the, the town view, and how it's operating, all these factors has to come in, into play with the options of what, if one decision or the other, what impact it would have for the council and the decisions made. I, I think it's, it's the only way that you would be, really be able to get comprehensive, not limited to just competitive risks, but also favorable ones, risks that, with the infrastructures, the, the laws, and every other aspect that we see with regard to that. That would be my thought.
I think that we do not live in a risk-free world, and being on a planning commission or a town council comes with the risks as well. It feels like to me that, at least with the town of Los Gatos, you have lots of systems in place to protect the community and the council and commission from, you know, making mistakes. We have legal counsel full-time, right? We have the planning commission, we have the planning code, the building code, we have the general plan. It feels like the people that are interested in doing this kind of job care enough about the community that they want to make the right decision, understanding that the risks are involved. So, there will be times where the planning commission clearly must make complicated decisions, whether to approve a large project or to deny it. I think that goes with the territory. And it feels like, in the last, you know, 29 years that I've been in town, the planning commission has generally made the right decision based on all the information they had, and I think they'll continue to do that with all the support that they get.
Yeah, it's a challenging question for sure. I think that, you know, we're living in a kind of a fluid environment right now with respect to the legislation. We're seeing more and more towns, cities challenging the laws as they exist. So, by the time some of the bigger, more controversial builders remedy projects, for example, make their way to hearing, the landscape may have changed a little bit. I, you know, based on how things have gone so far, I wouldn't count on it changing a lot. I mean, it's pretty clear that HCDs have been consistent all along, that they're going to do everything they can. And the courts so far have backed them up on as much housing as they can get, as fast as they can get it. So, I mean, I think the really, you know, when you mentioned risk, what really comes to mind, mind the most is, you know, putting the town at risk of lawsuit. I see a lot of people, you know, certainly a couple of planning commissioners lately on, on one recent project willing to just say no. And I think it's really important to, you know, well, if you want to take a stand, pick the right project, I guess, to do it on. Smaller projects, I don't think it's, it's worth doing that. When you've got a 30-unit project, and we have a mandate of 2,000 units, that's 1 and 1/2% of the units we're supposed to build by 2031. So, pick and choose your battles. My sense is by the time these go to hearing, the town attorney is going to tell us what we can and can't do, to a certain degree of specificity. I think it's going to be incumbent upon us if we are stuck saying yes to something that we don't really want to say yes to, negotiating as shrewdly as possible with the developers. And they will negotiate, you know. There's obviously a lot of flexibility they have in terms of waving out and concessioning their way out of development standards, but, you know, we've seen it in public hearings where if they're asked on the spot to do something, they do it. Many of the developers, certainly the ones who aren't entitled and flipping, but are going to be building their own projects, are interested in their reputation. And some of them are even members of this community. So, I think that being fluid with the development standards and being willing to negotiate in the moment at the hearing and ask them challenging questions and be assertive is going to be a really big, important thing to be able to do in order to get concessions.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Schwartzstein.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think this is really important. As my fellow applicants have talked about, I think, from my opinion, I think it's most important to protect the town from lawsuits and to follow the laws from the government, even if these might be unpopular. I think it's really important to protect the town from potential lawsuits. I think if there's anything that we might want to challenge, I think that, in my opinion, that would potentially come from the town council. I think it's also really important to protect the town from further developments that might not be open to the town's input and discretion. I think that that's what we're seeing right now. And yeah, I think that that would be something really important to protect the town from further in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Risto, if you maybe could start. I'm sorry, Badami. Councilmember Badami, if you could start with Mr. Ray, please.
Hello, Chris. Have you attended or viewed any planning commission meetings since your last interview?
I have not. It's only been a couple of weeks, but I have not been to a planning commission meeting since then, no.
The last interview was, I think, what, in December? The last interview that we had with you?
Was it, I don't remember. I thought it was March, it was a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. All right. Time flies.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have for you.
Mr. Sorty, and then we'll continue that rotation, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sorty, for being here. So, when I read your application, you've been paying attention to our meetings as well, but you paid particular attention to the Meadows and the Lodge, correct?
Correct.
Can you elaborate on any other meetings that you've watched? Because those are kind of not the typical hearing that you would have over the next four years. You would typically get maybe a second-story to one-story neighborhood, an exception to the floor area ratio, things like that.
Yes. So I've, so, I mean, YouTube's kind of a great thing. You can go on and watch an item at a time. I can say that I haven't made my way through beginning to end. Planning commission meetings tend to go pretty long. I've definitely, I've watched a fair amount of dialogue. I'm going to try to name streets. There's a project up on Kennedy. That's not far from where I live, right at South Kennedy, where it meets Kennedy. I watched some of the dialogue on that. And yeah, I mean, there's no question, there's a, there's a huge difference between some of these big housing projects we have coming down the pike and single-family lots. And so, you know, yeah, I've also, there's another one up on, gosh, I'm going to forget the name of the street. There's a couple of them that I've watched. But I guess what I would say about that is, you know, my interest in that and my experience goes back to my earlier days in planning. I worked as a planning consultant for the town of Los Altos Hills in the 90s. Lots of experience implementing hillside ordinance requirements and things like that. So, I mean, the big, the bigger issue items like the builder's remedy and some of the SP330s certainly is a big thing, but there's obviously lots of projects throughout town. I'm very interested in participating in everything and, you know, and being a good problem solver on these hillside projects as well.
Thank you. Welcome, Annie. So can you elaborate on any planning commission meeting that you watched recently? What were your observations? How do you feel about the decision-making and the process that was involved?
So sorry, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, council member.
Okay, is that better?
I don't know if there's...
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Sorry, I still can't hear you.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. All right. Have you watched any planning commission meetings lately? And can you elaborate on what you observed, how the process went, how the decision-making was made? And if hopefully you've watched something other than maybe the Lodge, because that's something that's probably not going to be typical over the next four years, should you be appointed?
Yep. Yeah, I watched the one that was about the, I'm not sure what to call it. It was the, it was across, it's like right across the street from where you all are right now.
Cafe Dio, right by the high school?
Yes, exactly. Yep. Yeah, I watched that one. I thought it was really interesting to hear all the public comment from all, everyone, and then kind of the in-depth policy conversations that people were having around, especially a builder's remedy project. I found that really interesting. Yeah, I'm not totally sure to elaborate more on that. Is what's, what's helpful to elaborate more on?
I was looking more for something that would not be what you've been watching lately, that's what I talked to Joe Sorty about, maybe a fence exception or a height exception on, in a residential neighborhood that's not part of our SP330s or builders remedy projects. I want to see...
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, how your discretionary process would go.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure. Yeah, I've seen a few of these. Sorry, they're hard to keep straight just because there's so many of them, but I've seen a few just about, just about kind of like setbacks or about, I think I saw one recently about, there was a house in the hills, and they wanted to make the house larger, and it, there was kind of, it was kind of like a weird footprint, and there was discussion about whether or not, like, the house really fit that weird footprint, or whether it was a good idea to put that house there or not. I thought that was really interesting. So, yeah, I think that, I, I think I'm learning a lot. I don't come from a planning background, but I think I'm learning a lot about kind of recommendations that you get from the staff on these topics, and then also from the proposing side, and then also that you get from the others.
Thank you. Okay, Rasha, welcome. So, same question for you. I know when you last interviewed with us, you had watched a planning commission meeting on December 11th. Have you watched any others? Can you elaborate on which one you might have watched, how the decision-making was, the process?
So, I, my interview was in March as well. I didn't get the chance to be in one of the live sessions with regard to those committee decisions. I had only gone through the minutes on some of the recent ones, from March 26th and the previous one, specifically as it relates to all the research done for the project for South Kennedy and for Brown Lanes and the decisions and the actions that were taken. It, it gave me a good view of how do you come to the decision whether to agree to it or agree with the condition? How do you decide and make the votes for the motions on each of those?
Okay, thank you.
To the good one, then. Okay, first of all, I want to say, Councilmember Badami took my question because I wanted to ask you questions about planning commission meetings you've watched. So I've got that answer. I guess, you know, since you've said why you want to be on the planning commission, but if you've looked at the planning commission or seen our composition, can you tell me, like, how you can complement the skills that we have on there, or what, more of an open question, what would you bring to the planning commission? And with the discussion of, we've got some, some hearings that we'll have that have a lot more discretion, others that are going to be really tied up in state laws. So you've got a mix of roles. So tell me why it's interesting... got a mix of roles. So tell me why it's interesting to you and what you think you could bring that is going to help make our town survive this whole thing.
Thank you for the question. Yeah, it's, so I think one of the things I can bring, I tend to be a little bit more technically inclined, having got a planner that's done a lot of analysis of digesting of, you know, codes, ordinances in the past. I did take the time to look through the objective development standards for the town, which I think I'm relatively new. I was really happy to see the word "shall" all throughout the documents that are "should" because we all know we can't implement anything that says "should." I also looked at the hillside design guidelines and became pretty familiar with those. So I think that my contribution would be a little bit more on the technical side of things, given my technical background in planning. But I've also had a fair amount of experience. I've sat on specific plan subcommittees. I sat on the Alameda Northern Waterfront Specific Plan Committee as a developer representative several years ago and had an opportunity to collaborate with all the different stakeholders in the community, people that were interested in, you know, pedestrian facilities, folks that were interested in parks, environmental community, and other property owners. So I think consensus is a really, really, it's a skill that I think I can, I want to be able to enhance it and get better at it, but I think it's a really, really important skill to be able to master. I have noticed the council striving for consensus, you know, at times when, you know, sometimes you might be inclined not to be as cooperative and not to get to consensus or just let it go to a vote. But I've actually kind of marveled at some of you folks working together collaboratively to actually achieve consensus, which is, it just makes for a better community, right? So I think that's one area where I've, through some of my recent experience, I've learned to do that. And part of it's watching the hearings. And I look forward to kind of enhancing that skill, so.
Great. Great, thank you. Okay, now it's not a good mic anymore. Oh, here we go.
Okay, thank you. So then I'll wrap around to Annie. Same question, if you heard it?
Yeah. Okay, so I think my skills come from my day job, which I'm a researcher. I'm a mixed methods researcher. So that means that I work with both quantitative and qualitative data. So quantitative data is typically what you think of when you might think of research. It's things like numbers, statistics. So this might be something similar to when you think of like, on the planning commission, when you think of like a traffic study. So typically, I think of quantitative data as really valuable because you're getting to know a lot about a large number of people at one time, but you're not learning a ton about those people. So for example, in a traffic study, you might just be counting the number of cars that pass a certain place at a time, but you don't really know where those cars are going. You don't know who are in those cars. You don't know a ton about those people in those cars, if they're feeling frustrated about traffic or anything like that. Qualitative data, on the other hand, is kind of similar to something akin to people coming to planning commission and giving verbal comments. So those are personal stories that we gather in qualitative research. Those are like in-depth questions, interviewing people. And my job as a mixed methods researcher is to marry both of those types of data and really kind of gain valuable information from it. So I think that my skills would be really valuable on the planning commission to really kind of find coherence from both of these kinds of data that we're gathering. So we might be hearing something from town staff. We might be hearing something else from the people who are coming to planning commission, coming to town council, giving verbal comment, and really trying to find a middle ground and see where we can come together and come up with something that will make sense to the most amount of people.
Thank you. Rasha, same question.
Thank you. So I see this role as very close to the skills of what I'm currently even doing. I lead global risk management development for the company I work with. And the whole idea of just being able to structure the right planning, the right research, the right approach to make things work effectively for the purpose that's designed for, it is my core skills that I do every day. Having a global experience is really also important because it helps us to learn what can we bring into the town that could be a win that we might not know, but other global entities might have been, or towns have been able to have in the future. And so I have very strong, of course, influential skills with the research, with the analytics, with the right approach to looking at specific projects. I've also been in a similar role in previous, in another country, in Republic of Ireland. And it was very rewarding to be able to work with communities, understand their position, understand the needs for the state, and being able to manage through the right negotiation and the approach to enable the success of the projects that's intended in a certain form that would work. I do have a very good working relation and negotiation skills that's given my role and also a clear understanding that the laws and the regulations that we have to work within still needs to be applied through any of the execution experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for finally an easy question with, you know, at least from my perspective, not with a clear answer for me. I'd also like to say that, as you know, it's my third time sitting here going in. Of course, every time there's some spectacularly qualified, you know, candidate next to me who has this very specific, you know, planning background, great. Anyway, that being said, if the commission or the town council is looking for more than just a specific technical skill, I think for me, and I've said this in the last interview, is what I bring is my experience in real estate in town for 29 years and more of the boots-on-the-ground understanding of what the general buying and selling public and members of this community are looking for these days, right? Showing properties out in the streets all the time, meeting people. I hope that that's a skill set that the town and the planning commission is interested in besides the technical skills. I went to Cal Poly. I have a degree in construction management. I've been involved in the town. We've talked about all this before. But again, for me, that's what I think, that's for me the skill set that I can bring. It's just the connection with the community and to understand what people want these days. And that can help me make the right decision if I'm sitting on a planning commission, what the community is interested in, what they want.
Yeah, we probably should do that. So since we've finished our rounds, yeah, okay. Anyone would be interested in being appointed to the general plan if they were not appointed to the planning commission? Yes?
If and also both.
Yes, yes.
I haven't had a chance to think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Schwartzstein?
Yeah, yes, I would be.
Okay, great.
How many openings do we have?
I don't know.
Two or three?
We'll look it up. Okay, we don't need to answer that immediately. Thank you all for your participation. And I've gotten all the information I needed without yet another question, so thank you. Okay. So now we're going to move on to the personnel board position and ask Ms. Johansson to come on up here. And we're going to, again, do a rotation of council members, but this one I'll start with a question and then every council member will be. First of all, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Ah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Martha Johansson.
Johansson, okay. So this is a board that doesn't meet very frequently. And if you were looking for, you know, YouTube or other things, I don't think there's anything. There may be some agendas. But we're, I'm interested in the professional background and personal experience that people have that are bringing to this role. And so I'm wondering, are there some personnel or human resource practices that you think are leading and maybe a town like Los Gatos with our small staff of 150 people could think about adopting from your background in human resources?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. I do not work in human resources. I am a state counselor and work with a disability for an employment agency in which we deal with a lot of employment issues. So that's kind of my background in terms of work experience. I work with a lot of people with disabilities finding employment and prepare them with a lot of employment issues, discrimination, advocacy. And also, this is my background, professional background. On the side, I also serve in several board and commissions for the state of California. I have been appointed to be state counsel on disability. So we meet on a monthly basis. And we deal also with issues for the employers for the state of California. On the side also, I serve on the union as a union representative. And I'm also a labor management representative. So we bring to the higher executive management team issues related to the employers in the office and try to resolve those issues. And then we kind of gather information from all the agencies and throughout the state of California and bring that to the hiring management, I mean, to the higher-level executive management team and present to them the issues. So in the past, I have been a hearing suspension officer for a large district in another state in which we interview, this was for students that were having some disciplinary or the risk to be suspended. So we collect information, did interviews, and then be very neutral with the decision, collect information, deal with sometimes lawyers that came to the hearings. And I was the hearing suspension officer.
Okay, thank you. Okay. There'll be opportunity to expand on that. So Vice Mayor, maybe you could go.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I think it seems like you have great experience for this. I wanted to hear a little bit more about your role with unions and sort of how, what roles you've played on labor management committees and as a union rep.
Yeah. In the labor management, I, right now, have been appointed to represent the Central Valley of California. And so we meet with staff and collect the issues, like I said, that concern that affect the employers. And then we meet with all the union representatives. And then we kind of practice and rehearse. And then when we are ready, we present those issues to the executive management committee. So there are different issues that employers face. And also, like, sometimes there is one-on-one issues with employers. So I come with them and kind of gather the issues. We always recommend to talk to the supervisor before it's go to the higher level in terms of filing a complaint, written complaint, and before we kind of move forward. So once that situation is not, doesn't take anywhere, we move to the next level. So they write a written complaint, and then we come and listen to the facts, try to be very neutral, like I said, in those cases. Like I said, labor management is to our union representative as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry for going out of order, Councilmember Rennie, but if you'd like to go and then we'll go. Okay. So Councilmember Badami.
I'll pass to, no reflection.
Yeah, I was going to say, given that you are extraordinarily qualified, and we don't actually have to make a choice except whether we want to appoint you or not, I don't have any other questions either. And it's not due to a lack of curiosity.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much then. And so we will now continue the meeting. So you can have a seat. If you'd like to stick around, we're going to move into, yeah, thank you, into, we call deliberations, which is actually filling out a ballot and tallying that up. So if we, do we need a minute on that?
So we will now be distributing the ballot. Four applicants were interviewed for one short-term vacancy on the planning commission. Council may appoint only one applicant. One applicant was interviewed for a short-term vacancy on the personnel board. Council can appoint one applicant. And I did want to notify you that there are two vacancies for the general plan committee. So at the conclusion of this ballot, once we reveal who is appointed to the planning commission, we can distribute a ballot for the general plan committee if council desires.
Yeah, I think probably there's interest in that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think probably there's interest in that, so, yeah.
Okay, I will read the results. Chris Ray received one vote from Councilmember Hudes. Annie Swartzenstein received one vote from Vice Mayor Moore. Joe Sorty received three votes by Councilmember Badami, Councilmember Rennie, and Councilmember Risto. And with three votes, Joe Sorty is appointed to the planning commission. Personnel board, Martha Joannis, received four votes from Council, Vice Mayor Moore, Councilmember Badami, Councilmember Rennie, and Councilmember Risto. And with the four votes, Martha is appointed to the personnel board. We'll go ahead and prepare ballots for the general plan committee.
Do we need a recess? No.
We're just printing them out right now. Okay, I'll read the votes. The Rasha Fushin received three votes. Councilmember Hudes, sorry, Mayor Hudes, Councilmember Badami, and Councilmember Rennie. Chris Ray received a unanimous votes. And Annie Swartzenstein received two votes from Vice Mayor Moore and Councilmember Risto. So with three votes, Rasha receives the appointment to the general plan committee, and Chris Ray with unanimous votes receives the appointment to general plan committee. We'll be contacting all of the applicants with further information on their appointments.
Great. Well, thank you all for participating. I'm always impressed with the residents of Los Gatos, and just our gratitude goes out to you. So thank you. This meeting is adjourned.